To item number 18, I'll ask Robert Haney, City Manager, to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Y'all have requested an opportunity to provide staff direction on how we report COVID-19 on a daily basis. And so this agenda item is really an opportunity to allow you to do just that. In your backup, I have attached a sample document that we could use as a starting point for discussions. It's fairly simple. It basically reports, and as the council policy kind of breaks out, it reports total test results, total positives. Those are defined as molecular PCR-only tests. It's a specific type of test. That's the gold standard that we use for active cases in Abilene. Total probable cases, which are defined as antigen tests in the policy. Total negatives, total active cases, which would be the total current PCR cases that are positive and active and ongoing. Total recovered, total deaths, the average age of death, the average age of hospitalization. And at the request of some other parties, hospitals specifically, looking at total hospitalizations of in-county residents and total hospitalizations of out-of-county residents. The intent of the policy also is to provide some mechanism for when the state of Texas comes and says, oh, by the way, we need you to start reporting this, that we can do that without having to amend this policy. If we have direction from the Department of State Health Services, we'd follow that direction. There'd be a notification requirement that the council be notified of that change in short or within two business days. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions, counsel, they have.
You know, who knew that you would need pandemic software elaborate reporting of COVID-19? And so, Robert, could you talk a little bit just about you or Annette? Talk about the difference between the PCR test, antigen test, and antigen test, and talk about what the state's requiring. I know they came out and was more definite in regards to what they expected and how what status proposing kind of mimics that?
I sure can. Let me grab my notes real quick, Alan.
And so while he's getting his notes, you know, Abilene, if you look at West Texas communities, we report every single day. Ector County, as Prodesa is, reports three times a week. Bleeve Amarillo, Monday through Friday. San Angelo formally, once a week. You know, we report every single day. And so in regard, providing information for the community.
So, Mayor, what we received yesterday afternoon is an email from Department of State Health Services. They're asking all public health districts to start reporting probable cases to them by 8:00 a.m. on Friday, July 24th, which is just around the corner here. And so then they refer to a document, the EpiCase Criteria Guide. And the EpiCase Criteria Guide then defines what is a confirmed lab positive case, what a probable case is. And it is a logical, logic puzzle. If you're this, then this, or this, and that, and this, or this. It's a very complicated matrix, but one in which our health department has figured out. The one thing in here that is, that is not included in our numbers, which in full disclosure is being asked to be included, although separately from the rest of our numbers, is the antibody in serum plasma or whole blood indicative of a new or recent infection. There's been a lot of discussion about antibody tests and their efficacy in reporting a positive. Nobody from my staff will argue they should take the place of a PCR test, which is the gold standard. And by the way, the only one Department of State Health Services says can create a lab confirmed test. The antigen test is a strong positive. If you receive a positive on the antigen test, it is likely positive. It has a lower sensitivity rate for negative testing. So if you receive an antigen test and test negative, but you still are clinically symptomatic, or you have an epidemiological linkage, such as you're, you have direct exposure, you have a family member with direct exposure, you likely need to follow the PCR test to confirm that negative. The antigen negative may not be as conclusive as we might hope. And so there are no perfect tests. We need to be certain about that. Even the PCR test isn't perfect. You can have a, you can have a false negative and a false positive on a PCR test, is my understanding as well. And we have had employees who tested negative on the PCR, but more than likely, based off their symptoms and what they're experiencing, were positive for COVID. So we said, no, please stay home. Don't come into work. I can go through the matrix if you'd like, but the bottom, the bottom line is, is that we need to start reporting probable cases to the state of Texas. We'll do so with this report.
So before, so the PCR is the gold standard. The challenge with the PCR is that we're at a point a few weeks ago, it was taking seven, nine, 10 days. No possibility of tracing at all when that occurs. The antigen test is a 15, 30-minute response, not as accurate, but the medical community feels pretty confident that a positive is indeed a positive. What the state has communicated is that it's appropriate to put that antigen under a probable category. And so that is what's before us at the meet. Other bills and also more are included in the upcoming reporting, but that's kind of the gist of it. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. If you read the EpiCase Criteria Guide, you will see that antibodies can also be classified as a probable case. If they meet epidemiological and other clinical criteria, they should be classified as a probable case as well. So if we're going to report probables, you can, I could make a strong argument based off the EpiCriteria Guide, that perhaps antibodies should be included in that. I'm not aware of a community that's reporting antibodies. I've reached out to my city manager group. There's been no one to confirm that they intend to do that, although they're all starting to report antigen tests. And that will, if they haven't already started to report antigens, they likely will with this email coming from the Department of State Health Services.
And in West Texas communities, there are some that only, only report PCR before this.
Yes, sir.
Some PCR and antigen. I'm not aware of any in West Texas that record antibodies, though, as far as the number.
I don't know what impact this email will have on other jurisdictions.
Questions of Mr. Hannah Pires, the public here from the council?
Well, when this had first come up, I'd sent Robert a link, because the CDC's website about COVID-19 test results specifically says that the antibody tests can provide a positive if you have other coronaviruses, such as the common cold.
That's right.
And so I was concerned about us including the antibody tests in our numbers, because if someone had a cold, that could be triggering a positive count, which would overstate the impact that COVID has in our community. And so I don't know. There were others on the council that had expressed concern about what numbers we were presenting. And I know I've heard from some saying, why is this even a political question? And it's a very political question, because we're being asked to make decisions based on the numbers that are being presented to us. And so I want to feel comfortable and confident that the numbers that we're given are an accurate reflection of the impact COVID's having on our citizens and not just a guesstimate of what it might be or might not be. So that's, that's why we're involved in the discussion.
Yes, sir. It's also a very fluid discussion. You know, a month and a half ago, I don't know if we had the antigen test. And we certainly didn't have at the beginning of the outbreak of the pandemic. When talking to our medical community, it seemed very clear that they were less concerned about antibody reporting. They're adamant about the reporting of antigen testing results as part of our numbers, which is why we made the changes originally to the numbers. It was clear that there needed to be more discussion on that. So we reverted back to our prior reporting template and are asking council to weigh in on that decision today.
I have a question. I know that it's an ever-involving door, and I know that there are a lot of people who have concerns. And I'm curious if you have anyone that you've invited from your team here, such as maybe Dr. Drachenberg, that could speak to her recommendations or what she's seen. But I'm sure you've spoken and you've all conferred together, but it would be helpful to hear.
Sure.
Not just from us, but from people that are watching, a medical professional that can give maybe some, some flesh to what she would recommend as well.
Dr. Drachenberg is not here.
Okay.
She's on vacation. Otherwise, she would be here. But I do have Annette. Annette and Dr. Drachenberg work hand in hand together, and you're welcome to ask whatever questions you, you might, you might have.
Are you more relating your information from the healthcare community in regards to three different tests and what you gathered from their input, when asked?
When asked, with talking to Brad Holland, the CEO of Hendrick Medical Center, he was adamant that antigen and PCR tests be reported as probable cases and active cases. They needed, they can do the math, he said, they could, but they need both numbers. They use those numbers to make projections. The tech, the Abilene Medical Society, Medical Association in Abilene, also very strongly recommends the reporting of antigen, antigen tests associated with our daily reporting. Because the, the positive antigen test is such a very strong positive, the medical community feels strongly about it. That needs to be reported. It gives a, it gives a more accurate interpretation of what actually is happening with the pandemic in Abilene, Texas.
You did mention antibody. Do you want to, what, what is there, when asked about the antibody test, any input you want to share with the council?
I can have Annette go into, Annette can talk more about the science than I can.
What the, the appraisal that Mr. Holland and others have given you about their appraisal of the antibody test?
It is not sufficient for a clinical diagnosis. And the positive nature of an antibody is not something that they bank on. They look for epidemiological linkages, or they look for other clinical criteria that have been established. And they base that positive potentiality on those results, the clinical criteria or the epidemiological linkages, more than they do on the actual results of the antibody. It's indicative, it's helpful in the diagnosis, but it's not definitive. Where they look at an antigen positive is almost more definitive than anything else.
I'm sorry, can I ask one, Albus, you have a question?
Can't the antigen test be separate from the PCR test?
In fact.
And just keep a running total that way?
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, on the template we have, we have three columns. First column is molecular PCR, then the percentage of the total. People seem to enjoy percentages. And so the percentage of the total, the molecular, molecular PCR only. And then the third column is the antigen test. And so you'll see on the page, you'll see total positives, you'll see that broken or blacked out the antigen test. And then you'll have total probables. And that is, you put a digit in that particular column, and they're blacked out for molecular percentage of the total. The intent being that total probable cases would be your total antigen cases, and your total positives would be your total molecular cases.
I assume when the information is provided to the health department, it has a, a unique identifier for the patient?
Annette, why don't you explain some of the, how we track and trace and some of the social tracing activities that we do? They keep track of this the best of their abilities. I would love to say this is just a, a slick system that never fails and always works perfectly, but I would probably be lying to you. It is a fluid environment, and sometimes we lose track of people because the information we receive just isn't good. But we know it was a positive. We just don't know much more than that. But we do our level best to track what we can and do the social tracing on those individuals that we get about.
My question, just to give some guidance to the.
Sure.
The answer, the question's not so much for social tracking, but for if Jim comes in and gets the antigen test and it's positive, and then he goes in and gets a PCR, are we then taking that away from the antigen test and adding it to the PCR? Or is it getting counted twice? Are we making sure that that gets?
We, we are.
Handled, so we're not overreporting that way?
Yes. Annette, you want to talk specifically to that?
Annette Lurma, Director of Health Services. So to answer your question, it is not counted twice. So what we do is when John or Suzie go to get tested at a site, when they are positive, that site is going to send in the actual lab report. And so our people will take it, and they will put it into our system. The great thing about the new system that D-Lot built for us is that you can go in and search. And so if we receive a second report because they've got a confirmatory test, then we're going to see, as soon as you put that person's name in, it's going to pop up, and it will say, do you mean this person? And we will say, yes, that's, that is. We, you know, data entry, people are verifying dates of birth and ensuring this is the same person. There are slots that will say, did they have multiple types of tests? And you can go along that line, and you can check all the different types of tests that they have with the dates and all of that. So it tracks it, but it's only, we're going to report that positive one time.
Okay. Thank you.
Annette, so we know that legally, you have to report a positive test.
Right.
Legally, do you have to report a negative test?
They are not required by statute to report negative tests to us. They have been asked to report negative tests to us. And so now, all of the sites have been more compliant with that, because our Epi team developed a, like a survey monkey that they send out. And so they just populate that every day with all the information that we need. And so we're collecting those numbers from the test sites.
So do you have a pretty good confidence that we're reporting total tests in our community?
We are reporting everything that is reported to us.
Annette, I have a question. And I don't know that, if we can do this, is there any way that we can break down people who die from COVID versus those who die with COVID? Because, and I'll just tell you where I'm coming from. When someone passes away and they're a 52-year-old man, underlying conditions. So I mean, is that, and that may not be something that, that we have access to, and we may, it may not be broken down that way, but is there any way to do that?
So there is guidance from the state that dictates what is to be listed on the death certificate. So if someone is COVID-positive, when they pass away, that, that can be listed as a factor in their death. But they also can list, whether it's the JP, or whether it's the physician, whoever's filling out that death certificate, can list, you know, any number of things that they feel contributed to that death. The state does provide specific guidance to say, if someone passes away and they are COVID-positive, and it was a car wreck, and the obvious reason they passed away was because they sustained unsurvivable injuries in a car wreck, then that should not be counted as a COVID death. So there's some specific language in the guidance that the state provides that stipulates that kind of situation.
Thank you.
Gossmane Hurd?
Can we say that these tests can be inaccurate?
Absolutely.
So.
They can, we can get false positives, and we can get false negatives. And we hear stories all the time of both.
So if we have a confirmed false positive, does that come off the, off the count as an active case?
So when you say a confirmed false positive, can you explain if?
Well, say they had an antigen test, and, and they were positive, and then they had a PCR test, and they were negative.
So which one was wrong?
You tell me. The PCR is the gold standard.
So that's why we always say, these are tools that a clinician, a trained medical person, can take these three different tools, antibody, antigen, and PCR, and in conjunction with that tool and the, the result of that test, they can say, you have symptoms consistent with COVID. We have tested you, and you're negative for flu and strep and everything else we know to test you for. This happens all the time. I don't know how many times, you know, pre-COVID, if your whole family has the flu, and your final child, the one that had held out the longest, you call the doctor and say, they've got some symptoms, you know, can you, what do you want to do? And they say, I don't even need to see that child. I'm gonna call you in some Tamiflu, because their clinical judgment and experience says, everybody else in the household has this. I'm going to presume that you have it also. So I think that in a pre-COVID era, these are acceptable practices for the medical community. But I think people have a really hard time with this, applying that same kind of logic and medical training to make that same kind of decision. So it really needs to be a clinician saying, we think you have COVID. Whatever the test result is, could be positive, could be negative, we think you have COVID. So is it perfect? No.
Right. And, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but it's just like you just exactly said, is we think you have.
Right.
And we're basing all these numbers on positives on we think you have.
It's the best medical information we have.
I, I'm not disagreeing. We don't have very good tests. That's all I'm trying to say is, these tests can be very inaccurate. But these are the numbers that we're having to provide and base all this on.
Right.
I think Annette fairly explained the need to have both clinical criteria and epidemiological linkages, say that 10 times fast, as part of any diagnosis, diagnosis. And it's a clinician that does that. The health department never says you have COVID. If you get a test at the health department, it's done, the results are looked at, and a competent medical authority will render an opinion. Neither I, neither Annette, or myself, we don't practice medicine. We don't have the ability to do that. We're not diagnosing people with COVID.
Right. And I'm, that's what I'm saying. We don't need to put our health department on trial here, because these, I'm just saying, these are the guidelines we have to work by.
Yes, sir.
And they can be extremely inaccurate.
It's an imperfect system, yes, sir.
And I know we're going to a public hearing just a bit, but I just can't thank staff enough for they responded. I mean, in midstream, to set aside IT specialists and create software for the pandemic. And then to research and see other communities that may be reporting things, and include that I'm reporting, by also engaging the local medical community to respond to the expectations from the, from our citizens, to allow them to be equipped to make a decision for their lives. I appreciate you, Mr. Hannah, you, Ms. Lurma, and all those you're working with to respond to the pandemic in Abilene, Texas.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to also thank the health department. They worked, they work countless hours. And they get a lot of stones chucked at them from time to time, partly because we of a nation have polarized this, for right or wrong, we polarized it. And history may judge us for that, but this is what we're living in right now. I think they've tried to do their level best to present transparent and factual information to this community. I am proud of what they have done. And I stand behind the, the work product that they have produced.
I've got one more quick question. I don't know if Annette's the best, but when we have numbers that have recovered, is that from us following up with the patients and confirming they recovered? Or is there like a 14-day or 21-day window, and they automatically roll off? I'm just curious how we determine that number.
Yeah, that's a good question. So in the beginning, pre-antigen tests, we were having clinicians or nurses call them and follow up with every positive patient. And so we had a system that was case management. It was a shared Google sheet, and they would go in and they would mark them as, you know, did they meet the test-based criteria or the symptom-based criteria for release from isolation? And it was individualized. After antigen tests came on board, and there was a lot quicker turnaround for a number of positives all at once, we switched to a formula. And so we're trying to mirror, well, right now, we're doing like a 21-day roll-off. So from their test date, it will be a 21-day roll-off. When we get a new, we've got some software that we're ordering. And so it will be able to figure and do a little more consistent or precise figuring with our numbers. So it takes basically 20% of your active cases, because about 20% are going to be hospitalized. So it's going to give them a 30-day roll-off. And then with your self-isolated, which is about 80% of your actives, it's going to get, roll them off at 14 days. So it'll be a little bit more precise, but right now, the, the criteria is a 21-day roll-off.
Okay. Thanks.
Annette, explain the process. So I, I was in contact with a COVID-19 positive. What is the, the process? We know that, you know, we live in a free enterprise environment, so I can pay to get a test, but for the health district to give a test, what does that look like? If I'm engaged with a COVID-19 positive, do I automatically get the test right then? How does that look? What's our policy that regards?
No, so.
What are the CDC guidelines?
When someone calls to be screened for a test, and, and a lot of people do call immediately after an exposure, because they just don't know. Usually, it's not helpful to test immediately after an exposure, because you would likely get a negative test result. The incubation period is between two and 14 days. So when you are told to self-quarantine because you've had an exposure, the 14-day time period is because the incubation period can take that long. If someone's going to be tested, say, for example, like a first responder, they may be tested based on an exposure, but we like for them to wait at least, ideally at least five days, but better to wait seven days, so that if they are going to become positive, you've given that incubation period enough time to develop the virus. It's not helpful to come in on day two after an exposure, because you're going to get a negative test result, and you're going to continue going about your life, unknowingly exposing other people as you develop the virus. So that's kind of how we screen people. We're going to look for symptoms. We're going to advise on, it's best to quarantine for now based on your exposure, if you can. If you are critical infrastructure, you've got a job where you can't just afford to isolate yourself for 14 days, at least wear your mask while you are around others. And if you become symptomatic, you need to contact your healthcare provider immediately. And that's one thing we also recommend, is that they reach out to their own healthcare provider. This is someone who knows their medical history and can advise much better than the health department. This is the first time we've encountered them. We don't know your full medical history. We don't know what kind of risk you're at. It's best to reach out to their own primary healthcare provider.
Thank you. A question.
I have one. Is it safe to assume that when you admit them to the hospital, and they come up on this morning report that they're in hospital, that's 100% accurate, they have the virus, they may have underlying other things, but you think by then it's 100% accurate?
So my understanding is that when they are admitted to the hospital, they do their own tests.
Yeah.
They, they administer the PCR test and get confirmation.
Okay.
So.
That's really the number I look at. And, and I'd like to see that by county, if city or county, or, or outside the county, you know, because that tells us how the city's doing. And that's where I live, in the city.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
It's what we monitor as well.
Just a question of.
For my own information, so I can answer. When we have the simple mathematic mistakes, those come about because test in and test out? How, how does that come about? Or is just applying the system that?
So it just depends. What happens right now with our system is that there is a dashboard, and that dashboard is automatically populated from all of the data entry that goes on, on the various other sheets in the system. And so kind of the same way, it's absolutely a thousand times better than what we were doing with Google Sheets. But you can still have some errors in there. If you omit checking a box somewhere or something, and it doesn't populate that reporting dashboard appropriately. And our staff is really good about going and just making sure, double-checking, like, does everything add up? Is it good? But some of those days are crazy, and it may just slip by them. So they're, they're honest errors. We do usually know how to do math, but it's just in the midst of a fast-paced environment and a mistake of, of entry and maybe not checking the box is usually what it boils down to.
So we should just invite the public in and see what goes on?
We're happy to host people and walk them through the process. The, the ones that we have done that for have been amazed.
Amazed.
At the number of people it takes to, to make that system work.
Gossmane, a question also.
Yeah. Ms. Lurma, I definitely want to make it clear that I want you to know how proud I am of the health department here. I get tired of our health department getting beat up. And I know my questions were kind of stern. Those weren't directed at you. I'm just trying to put some real numbers out there, because y'all have done a fantastic job.
I appreciate that.
But, but what we're looking here is, you know, is our policies on, on putting these numbers out. You know, the state has not come out with any uniform test information that they want. So what is, what is uniform? You know, what are we discussing here? Because it, it doesn't matter what we put out, they're going to say, well, Dallas does this, and San Angelo does this, and Lubbock does this. And so I don't know what guidance to give you, but I appreciate. give you, but I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments prior to the public hearing of the council? Ms. Lurma, Ms. Hannah, thank you. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this item? If so, please inform, give your name for the record.
Good evening, Cynthia Alvidas. I just have a couple of suggestions that I think might be helpful. When you take a look at Texas DSHS's website, they actually have a database that contains all the information that they're requiring municipalities to report. And so they do have a format that is extremely user-friendly and reader-friendly. I think it would be helpful, because there is a lot of confusion on the reader's end when you look at the data and the way that it's presented, and it's understandable considering the way in which the requirements are changing so rapidly. It's really at no fault of anyone, but on the reader's end, it does look a little, it's a little confusing to read, especially because the way that it looks continues to change. So I thought that was helpful when I looked at it. Another recommendation that I would like to suggest is including the seven-day average for the positivity rate, considering how that's how the governor is going to decide whether or not he decides to close down the state. And I think that would be helpful for the readers as well as the citizens to know kind of where we are in regards to how we're doing, you know, in regards to COVID-19. So just a couple of suggestions that I think would help alleviate any kind of stress that's on the reader's end or that's on the citizen's end. It'll alleviate a lot of confusions as well, and probably keep people from coming up here yelling at y'all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We're starting the public hearing.
Thank you, Council David Swart again. As Mayor Pro-Tim pointed out, science sometimes is not exactly accurate. I can give you an example. Seventy-five years ago, last Thursday, before the Trinity test, they asked the scientists, would you run those numbers again? Because they were afraid they would set the atmosphere on fire and destroy the whole earth. And the scientists turned out, oh, we made a mistake, we got a decimal point in the wrong spot. I know there's a lot of cynical things on the internet and on social media about the reporting and misreporting of all these cases. I know, for instance, a friend of a friend went, he filled out the paperwork, but he got tired of waiting, so he left. And then about a week later, he got a letter in the mail, well, you're too intestine positive. Stuff like that scares you. You wonder how accurate it is. It's like they say, you know, maybe one day they're testing reports this way and another way, the other way. And you see these briefings with the White House, they started them up again, and you'll have Mike Pence on there talking about, yeah, this test they do, they go up and pretty well stick this swab up in your brain, and then you'll hear the president say, yeah, that one. And he said, well, I prefer this other one, that is one that you can do in five or 10 minutes. And he said yesterday in his briefing that he usually gets tested daily. And all these numbers and these different things about, this is a certain test, and this is a certain test, and when you see the vice president or president say, well, this is the test I prefer, and then they talk about the test where they put the up. And it would be nice for us common folk to know the difference between this test that the president or vice president touted about the five to 15-minute result, and the one that they put the swab up, and it takes two weeks or a week to get back, and the difference in these positive and probable positive and stuff. And you hear all this, it's just, you just, well, we don't know what to think. And then, I mean, the news media coming out, and the president and vice president doing these briefings, and then you hear this from the health department, every day our health department, and you don't know, he says, X amount of cases positive. And then you think, well, is that, like they were just debating here? Is that this one test, or is it this other test, or are they both, or whatever? It's very confusing. But like I said, scientists can be wrong, like I said 75 years ago. So I just hope, like you said, you can standardize this, well, people can understand it. Thank you very much.
Starting the public he, in the public hearing, anybody else want to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one offloads the public hearings, council, have any additional comments or directions for staff?
Mayor, I just want to point out, I know you don't like me to talk about percentages, but the death rate percentage in Taylor County is nine one-thousandths of 1% of the population. And the death rate of those who have had COVID is nine tenths of 1% of patients. It's a small, small number. And we've heard the governor and everyone else talking facts about COVID when they're really, we don't know any facts about COVID. But the only fact I really know and I want to put out there is a politician can't stop a virus.
Thank you, Councilman Hurd. Additional questions or comments from the council?
I just think that what we have been asked to do is do our best with, as Annette mentioned, possibly imperfect numbers, but that's what we've got, is to do our best to make sure that people have information, as much information as we can give them. And for some people, that'll never be enough, and for some people, it'll be more than what they need. But if we can take a step to where we do try to provide the public with as much information as we can, I think that's a good step for us, just to get that information in their hands.
And I just want to communicate, well, first of all, I want to, on behalf of this council and this city administration, provide condolences for the two additional citizens who passed this week. It's 13 total, very mindful of that. And also want to highlight that over 500 who've had the virus in our community have recovered. And I want to, again, just appreciate the response, the response of staff, and how they've handled themselves, and we're trying to put the best foot forth in regards to addressing COVID-19, acknowledging that if we have the opportunity to armchair quarterback or manage in hindsight, that things would be done differently. But I think that staff has responded well, and I think this council has responded well. And so we're not taking this lightly. We also don't want to overreact, and there is a balance. Additional questions of the council?
I just would like to point out that, as was mentioned, we have our numbers reported seven days a week, and the numbers are not just popping out of a computer. It's taking staff time, seven days a week, to keep up with that information. And so I just want to make sure people understand, our public health employees are not just doing life through Friday, nine to five. They are working every day of the week, and this is a trying time, and I appreciate what they're doing.
Our health industry is overperforming most in West Texas, and that is for sure. Any other comments or questions before I get a motion second?
Make a motion.
I have a motion, my Councilman McAllister.
Second.
I second my Councilman Price. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hurd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pro-Tim Albus?
Yes.
Councilmember Price?
Yes.
Councilmember Rents?
Yes.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yes.
Councilmember Craver?
Yes.